...for September 30th. We are having a meeting this evening before our fifth Monday forum. Take the opportunity to introduce the board to you. For the work session this evening, we have Selectman Chris Labonte, Vice Chair Paul Darji, Town Administrator Mark Bender, Selectman Michael Putnam, and Selectman Laura Duziak is excused for the work session this evening and will probably join us later this evening. So I would now invite you to join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, we welcome those that are viewing in this evening as well as those that are with us personally tonight. Again, for those that are present, we would invite you to join the meetings and your comments or questions that you may have using the microphones on your left or your right. Please announce your name and speak clearly into the microphone so that we can get you recorded and those at home can follow along with the discussions. Our first thing on the agenda this evening is a work session regarding the CTA proposed consulting agreement. The CTA was the organization that we approved last time as consultants for our dispatch. And we have received an agreement from them this evening. It is preliminary, and so we wanted just to take half an hour or so and just to go over that to see if anyone had any input into that, any changes that need to be made. And I'll open it up. Mr. Darji.
My main issue with it is it doesn't really talk about the deliverables in terms of analyzing MAC base versus a Milford-only solution or a regional solution. There should be language in there that defines exactly what we're going to get. And I don't see that. It just, it talks about deliverables on a solution, but it doesn't adjust it out for the various choices.
Okay. I thought that it did. I thought I had seen in there specifically where it talked about a Milford-only versus, and they didn't, I don't know if they're called-
If they did, I missed it.
It's in there. I'm sorry.
Alternatives will include a standalone town of Milford radio system and a combined MAC base radio system. That's under the radio system alternatives on page eight. But that was one of the things that I was looking for is to make sure that both things were covered. That's it.
Is this the bottom of page eight?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Radio systems. That one.
If you look also on page seven, the last section, the dispatch center survey. It says, let's see here. We will conduct an independent survey of the MAC base dispatch center to understand the equipment in use, the configuration of the center, the technology in use, and the staffing level currently implemented. This information will allow us to compare the current environment to industry best practices and make valuable recommendations. We will also survey the Milford police station to better understand the opportunity to relocate dispatch to this facility. And it goes on.
Okay. The-
Yeah, go ahead.
There's MAC base as MAC base as an interagency group, and then there's a regional solution which would be Milford and the other towns that's not under that. And there may be license, licensing issues with, you know, right now we're grandfathered with the 100 watt tower things, and it may be different if it's not MAC base. So that would need to be identified.
I understand what you're saying. I guess my feeling is in thinking about that, we really can't necessarily talk about, well, we can talk about a regional solution from the point of view of MAC base, continuing that. We can talk about a Milford-only solution, but if you decided to go a regional solution from the police station, I mean, that's a whole other dynamics involved in that, including the discussions that we're having with the other boards as to whether they would even want to be part of that because they would, they would be customers, I believe, at that time.
Well, if we don't talk about it, if we decide to go on our own, then we're telling them we're not going to work with them, that they're, we're kicking them out.
Well, I've stated before, and I'm going to state again, I think it's too early in the process to make a decision which way we're going to go. I think we ought to wait and get the information back from the consultant so that we've got all the information before us before we make an informed decision on that. Otherwise, you're sending a consultant off to do some work, and you've decided to go in a different direction already, so it doesn't seem logical to me.
Well, it seems to me that the Milford-owned regional solution is very similar to a Milford-only solution. It just adds a few pieces. And a lot of the information that's needed to do that would be available from a MAC base analysis. I think the big thing would be the frequencies that are available. Other than that, it's pretty much the same.
Okay.
I think, unless I'm misunderstanding it. If anybody has a better understanding, you know, chime in.
Yeah, I mean, I understand what, I understand what you're saying, but I guess I, I saw it as a Milford-controlled regional type thing is a different thing that is preceded by Milford as a standalone. And then you're getting, getting things in because there's a whole different dynamic as far as Board of Governors and, you know, there's discussions on who's going to be basically in charge of the dispatch over there, whether it's going to be the police department, whether you're going to have a Board of Governors. It's a whole discussion we really haven't had. Yeah.
I was just wondering if this is where you're going on it, and I was trying to actually find the actual Warren article itself for the consultant. Because I, I think I know where you're going on it, where, didn't the Warren article have something to say, and I could be mistaken, as far as any and all possible options, which I think that would still fall under the same thing on what, if I think you're going after the same way I'm thinking of, meaning to give the option of what would a regional be through MAC base, through Milford, Milford standalone? I guess, is that where you're going?
The way I look at it, there's several solutions that are possible. There's MAC base, you know, an upgrade of that.
Sure.
There's Milford only, and then there's Milford only with one, two, or three different towns as customers. I would, I would like to be able to, if we go on our own, be able to give a quote to the other towns to say, you know, "We would like you to come with us, but it's going to be X dollars to, to join with us as a customer." And without that defined, we won't be able to do that.
Is it your expectation that this consultant will determine what infrastructure is needed for, say, Wilton to be able to have sufficient communication if we were standalone?
Right, yes.
So you're asking to spend Milford taxpayer money to try to solve Wilton's problem?
We're looking at the whole problem, yes.
Okay. And I thought, and I thought, and I know I had tried to make this clear before, that I didn't want Milford taxpayer money going out and doing research on things that Wilton should be spending their own money to try to find out how much it would cost to fix their own problems.
Well, we're doing a lot of it with the MAC base analysis. You know, they, to do MAC base, they have to look at Wilton and Mount Vernon and Lineboro. So all that kind of stuff, you know, the number of towers and all the field sites would be the same. It's more the, whether it's here or at the police station varies.
Okay. And I guess I would not expect them to deal with Lineboro at all because Lineboro is a customer, not a member of MAC base. I mean, if Lineboro wanted to be there, I would think that it would be incumbent on Lineboro to find out what they needed to be able to hook the MAC base or what MAC base can offer them, but-
I agree with what you're saying as far as that you don't want to spend money to solve other towns' problems, but if we're, if one option is for us to be a provider, I think as far as us being a provider to ask them to figure out how we talk to them is kind of odd. Meaning, you think that would be something we'd figure out how we're going to talk to them? Meaning, if they were going to potentially come in as customers, that, that where you're going?
It should be an integrated analysis, you know. It's not good to look at things independently. Look at it holistically.
I guess if you're going to get a cell phone and you go to a carrier, you're going to say, "Do you cover my area?", not, "What do I have to do to get my phone to work on your antenna?".
Yeah.
Okay. So the Warren article says, "Shall the town vote to raise appropriate the sum of $85,000 for the cost communication consultant to identify all of the issues, concerns, and potential solutions to possibly establish a Milford emergency dispatch center to improve and expand the emergency dispatch communication system, and then to provide a detailed RFP including contract items." Again, I, I don't, I don't think it's right that, you know, if they want to add money to it, to what the consultant is doing, and make an agreement with that consultant to go out and do their share of it, I don't think it's right to have Milford taxpayer money go and do the analysis, analysis for Wilton or Mount Vernon to find out what they, what they need for infrastructure. That's just my, you know, my, my feeling was they were supposed to be looking out for Milford.
Gary?
Yes.
When they look, the agreement we could have with the other towns is that we will hook them up to us with the existing equipment, stuff that's already in place, antenna sites are up there. And if they want anything beyond that, that'll be up to them to figure out what they need, how much it's going to cost, and what they got to do to connect to us.
Or if they need anything beyond that.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
But yet, but yet, the consultant would really look at what does Milford need to make its services work?
Right. Milford would be the primary concentration, and it would make sure that we could connect to the other remote sites in the other towns.
Okay.
Then anything beyond that, it would be the town's issues to pay for and figure out what it's going to take to connect to us.
And they would then hire a consultant to go out and do that analysis within their town?
Provided it's that complicated sometimes. Once everything's in place, it's just a matter of duplicating what you've already got going to other antenna locations, just another location in town.
Cap Frye?
So, providing the agreement signed tonight, the 7th, 8th, and 9th of October, there CTAs coming up here to do a day and a half of interviews with all the department heads from everyone who's part of MAC base, including Director Johnson. So they are working to understand the whole dynamics of the system, if that helps.
Okay. Yeah, and this discussion might be good to bring it, bring into that, to just to, to clearly delineate the lines that are being drawn here. One place I saw in there, and it was, it was part of the legal thing, but it talked, talked about, oh, this is up on page five at the top, the governing law. It talked about how the agreement be construed in accordance and governed to the exclusion of the law or of any other forum by the laws of Virginia.
Yeah.
I think, I think that needs to be New Hampshire.
Yeah. They've already changed that.
They've already changed that?
Yeah.
Okay. And then the only, the only other thing I had on there was down, it was in the appendix under, was the, the part on page 10, the section of draft report review meeting. The last line of that starts out, and it's just, it's just a typo. There says, excuse me, the second, second sentence, "We will capture feedback from these meeting." That should be a plural.
I think it's a single meeting. It should be this meeting.
Um-
Listen.
Go back, because I thought there was something to-
I think they're talking about one meeting.
Okay, that's a possibility too. Either way.
It should be consistent.
Yeah, let's, let's at least make the second and third sentence consistent.
Yeah.
Okay.
One of the things that has me concerned is a couple of times in there, they're going to rely heavily on the MRI study. That study, in my estimation, wasn't worth anything. I think it was influenced, I think they didn't spend much time here, and that was obviously by the amount of mistakes we found in the report when it was first issued to us. I don't think MRI did much studying. And I think that was just a boilerplate report that could have been written, well, obviously was written for a town Milton, Milton someplace, had two fire stations, one on Oak Hill Road, et cetera, et cetera. That was one of the things they forgot to change in it. So I, I would be concerned with them utilizing MRI's report as a basis of some of their decision-making.
Any comments from the board members regarding that? Yes, Mr. Darji?
I have no problem with them using it. There's, there's a lot of information about different kinds of equipment. It's, it's an import. They need to think about things also, you know, decide for themselves, but, you know, it's data that's available. I think it's fine to be used as a data source.
And I understand that their, their intent in using this is so that they don't have to replicate the wheel two or three times from, but I have to agree also with Mr. Putnam in that, that that report was not the best report that we have seen, so I think it needs to, needs to be taken, you know, with a little bit of a grain of salt, but certainly the data within it should, should be helpful to at least serve as a starting point for them. Anything else? Mr. Bender?
Yeah, I've got just a few things. On page one, the very last paragraph, "The services will also include any other tasks which the parties may agree on in writing. The consultant hereby agrees to provide such services to the client with an agreed-upon corresponding increase in fees." I don't know if that can really be allowed because the funding of this was based on the $85,000 voters approved in the Warren article.
So we, I guess we have the choice of either having them excluded or just recognize that we're not going to execute it?
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
And I've, I've got two or three things yet. On page two, item eight, "Compensation as stated in this agreement does not include sales tax or other applicable duties as may be required by law." I think if we make the change, and they've already made the change to the state of New Hampshire, there is no sales tax, so that probably takes care of that, but I'd just soon eliminate all reference to, to sales tax or duties. And then item nine, also on page two, "The consultant may be reimbursed from time to time for all reasonable and necessary expenses in-" Yeah, it's fine, as long as it's, it's part of the $85,000. We're, we're not going to exceed $85,000, so whatever travel or other expenses they have are all part of that total.
That was part of one of my questions. Why would you reimburse anything when they gave a set price for it?
Yeah.
Well, is, is there something that we could put in just as a blanket statement, saying nothing in the cost, nothing in this agreement, the services shall not exceed $85,000?
Yes.
And that will, that will kind of cover everything.
Actually, I think it'd be okay to have that in, because we, if something came up and we did have to do something, we could spend it out of the town budget, not out of the Warren article. So legally, it could be done. But in that particular one, item nine, that very last clause says, "If approved by the client prior to expenses being incurred."
Yeah.
So, you know, if they say, "Oh, you know, I want to fly up to come visit you, and you're going to pay for the flight", we'll say, "No." Right.
Exactly. I agree with you that it should be in there in case something does pop up.
You never know what's going to happen.
It's covered, and like he said, we might pay for it from someplace else, but it might be an integral necessary thing for the consult, for the report.
Would the same thing apply to the section under, on page one, the town administrator?
Yeah.
So you just-
Yes, exactly. Just leave it there and be aware that we have to say no if there's something that really isn't necessary at all.
It does say, "An agreed-upon corresponding increase in-"
Right.
Yeah, it's in, the bottom of page one, it's in writing, you know, agreed upon in writing, so we can always just say no.
Okay. Mr. Bender?
And then on page 12, they have payment dates, but all they're doing is referencing a month, so I would say we should, and we should put in maybe October 15th, November 15th, the draft report. We're really looking for, for something around December 1st, where the final report, I believe they clarified, is December 16th, so-
Says the final, final report on the payment, January 2020, so we should verify the fact that that should be December 19.
Yeah, I, I kind of wondered when I saw those dates if they had interpreted the December 16th date as the date of the draft report, not the final report.
Right. So we'll, we'll clarify those dates and the corresponding payments.
Okay. Anything else? Anything from anyone else? Mr. Ritchie?
Thank you. Rodney Ritchie, Bald Hill Road. Back, if I may, just a moment to Mr. Darji's concern of options. I don't think I've heard a specific mention to an option that would be a Milford-operated regional from the current location of the dispatch center, which would be a significant, I would think, savings in dollars and maybe overcome some of the license, et cetera, concerns if the location were not changed. Is that a option that you will be getting consideration for?
A regional from the existing location?
Yes.
So basically keeping it the same as it is?
No, a Milford operated-
Oh, a Milford only, excuse me.
More of a takeover of MAC base?
Well, correct. We, we rent the space, as I recall, so.
Why would that not be considered?
Well, at that point, I don't know if that would be grandfathered under the NFPA requirements as it is now, so-
I don't either, Mike. That's why we have the consultant to find out for us.
I know it wouldn't be okayed through the NFPA requirements.
Again, the consultant should be able to tell us, I would think.
But, so if we did take that over, we'd have to bring that into compliance, and if we're going to do that, we might as well just build the addition at the police station.
I'm not sure, again, that's beyond my pay grade to determine, but that's, again, why we have the consultant, I think. If we're using it now for this purpose, then why would it not be usable by a Milford-only operated situation to use it as well?
Because, because it's exchanged hands. It's like anything that's grandfathered. And once you change hands, it's going to be brought up the coat.
I, again, beyond my capacity, architecturally or otherwise, to determine that. You may be correct. The only other item I had was, I believe the consultant should be able to state if they're addressing the regional operation of a dispatch center as to what other towns logically accessible to here would be, would be required to do to tie in. That has nothing to do with what they have to do internally with their own talent, communication operations, but what they would have to do. And if we're going to have a regional operation option, then that would be, I think, expected of the consultant to say, "We certainly can't expect Swansea to tie in to you, but if you're going to have these towns that are in this region tie in, here's what you will have to have, Milford, for them to reach you." That's, to me, what the regional question really is. Has nothing to do with what the other towns have. But I hope that will come out in the regional question. I'm not sure that it's covered there.
It, it actually, the way you phrase that, it sounds as if, say, what the other towns need to do, and going back to Mr. Putnam's statement, is basically they're tied in now. And let's, let's say that a town works fine, except they've got a problem with one emergency service. I mean, I don't know that it's up to us to tell them what they need to do as opposed to them figuring out what they need to use our service.
You may be correct, Gary. I, I just hope that the consultant will, without looking at what they need, what we need to have for other towns to come in. If we're going to offer a product as a regional dispatch center, then when we say we can deliver to XYZ, we better be sure we've got a truck that can get there. If we are going to be the regional service-
I guess, I guess it goes back to my statement, are we going to be a system or are we going to be a service?
Right. And that's what I hope the consultant's going to be able to tell us what the different costs and expectations would require.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. With that, then, we'll, we'll close the work session. Yes.
So what's the expectation in terms of signing this thing? I mean, we identified a small number of changes, which I think you could probably even handwrite on one.
Well, I think we need, probably need to go back and get agreement from them on, and then I would expect that something would come back to the board to be officially signed.
Time is of the essence, so-
Or, or, I mean, we could, we could authorize Mr. Bender to sign the agreement with the changes that have been proposed. Cap Frye?
If you get them handwritten, I can just send them to her.
Okay.
And then she'll just rewrite it with your changes.
Okay.
We, we want them to get started right away, you know.
Actually, I think it's-
There's not a lot of time.
Right. I think, and actually, I think it's the, the board that needs to sign this.
That's our signature spot.
So, so, you know, once, I would say that-
Well, that could be one of the changes, just-
Well, no, we, we can call a special meeting just to come in and sign, sign the thing.
Or we can just have it in the office and-
Right, we can approve it right now. I'll make a motion, we approve the changes, and, and once they're approved, we get it signed by just dropping in and signing it.
I second that.
Okay. It was a motion by Selectman Putnam and second by Selectman Darji to approve the changes that have been made. Do you want to see these changes?
It is some minor-
Mr. Bender, you look like you're not happy with that.
No, I'm okay with that.
Okay.
Craig and I will work on the, the changes after the meeting or tomorrow. They're, they're relatively minor. I don't think there'll be any objection on CTA's part. I don't think there'll be any objection on CTA's part. And we'll get a revised document out. We'll distribute that and have the copy in the file for board signatures.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I guess my question is, so everyone's comfortable with what we're, meaning we're all clear on what we're getting out of this, I guess?
I think what we're trying to do is just add clarity to it to make sure that everything's covered, yes.
So this should give us an opinion, per se, of whether we should stay with MAC Base, whether we should have a standalone on our own, or whether we should have our own as a regional? I guess, am I interpreting that right, that that's what we're going to...
Yes. That's the way I interpreted it.
And then going forward with that, for them to develop the RFP, that would let them, on whichever, do they come up with options on all three? Meaning, at some point, do we say, okay, they come back and say, "Here's our recommendation," and then do we make a decision then, and then they come up with an RFP? Or how do we pursue, or do they come up with basically what would be an RFP for each option to give, I guess what I'm going to say, a rounded-out total price on which, what each option would cost us?
They should give us what each option would cost, our standalone or rebuilding MAC Base.
Operating, right, but, or standalone regional.
Well, the standalone regional, like I said, they're going to tell us what, we're going to connect to existing equipment. Okay? And that'll be part of the regional. Who operates it will be done under the municipal agreement or whatever documents drafted to say this is how it's going to run. And if any town beyond that wants to enhance their communications, it's up to them to pay, pick up the tab, figure out what's needed, and do it.
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm not looking so much for what I'm going to call tangible things. Would they be able to give us, and I'm going to use the term "estimate," as far as if we're looking at the whole picture on what it would cost to have a Milford-run regional dispatch with the projected cost, what we would charge each other place? That's going to have a relevance on what that system's going to cost us.
I think it'll be up to us, or, I mean, depends on who's running the thing, as to, you know, what the charge is going to be.
But I guess I'm not so much looking for the charge versus the cost. You understand where I'm going?
You're talking about operating costs, or you're...
Whether it be, yeah, whether it be operating costs, I guess that would be a good way to look at it. And I'm going to throw crazy numbers. If we have a standalone and it costs $100,000 a year to run to do our own, what's it going to cost us to have, call it, say, the same three-partner towns, but as one owner, two customers? You see where I'm, I guess, what would offset to the taxpayers of Milford there?
Well, that, again, should be something that's made up by us. That's a decision we can make. They could give us examples of, well, they do this in Virginia and they do this at KMA, et cetera, et cetera. But it'll ultimately be up to us to say, "This is what it's going to cost for the town of Wilton to get our dispatching services," et cetera, et cetera.
I think it's going to be difficult to come up with any kind of an analysis like that, particularly if we end up going Milford alone. Because, number one, there's no guarantee that we're going to have a regional dispatch anyway. I mean, the, you know, the input from the other towns seem to be that they want some type of a board of directors and they want input into the operation of it. So if we were to go alone, it very well could be that Monvernon will hook up with Goffstown and Wilton could go with Hillsborough County, and you may not have any. So, you know, my, I don't know, I don't know how you come up with an analysis on anything that would be clear as to how much income you'd have, because you really don't know how the other towns are going to react.
I guess alls I'm sort of trying to base it on is the MAC agreement that we're under now, meaning we're 71%, and each one has its own percentage. So you have a way to figure out, in truth, what it costs the town of Milford taxpayers. I guess that's, once again, going on that any and all options thing. It was a question to see on clarification, but I guess my answer is no, it's not going to tell us that.
And I guess my, my expectation would be, we would be able to see what it was going to cost us with MAC Base. We'd be able to see what we would, what it would cost us if we paid 100% of the bill as a standalone. I think those are the two comparisons that you have to be up against, because there are no guarantees that you would have any other town joining us if we built our own extension at the police station, or, and I don't know what's happening upstairs, you know, we can...
A list of formulas to, how we do our contracting, or whatever you want to call it, would probably be longer than the agreement. There are so many different formulas that are used, or can be used. And he could project them all, but it'd still be up to us to figure out which one we want to use. So I think that's a waste of time, his time, and I would, I'm not expecting that from him.
I guess alls I was looking at, something that would give us an idea. I guess my perception is, if the choice came to have a Milford-only standalone, I guess, how does this board decide what we're going to charge other towns? Like, do we hire another consultant then, or how do we, as a board, decide what the cost would be to the other towns?
To make a decision. Right now, it's based on population. That's a pretty fair way of doing it, as far as I'm concerned. So we could continue doing it on population. We could take and split the fixed costs three ways and add something to that for whatever, and there's hundreds of ways.
I agree, there's hundreds of, and that's why I'm going back to just the fact, I didn't know if there was, I don't want to say a predetermined way, going back to what had been discussed before. If the other towns wanted to be part of Milford, the expense would go on the other towns. So we couldn't actually split the same way we do as far as...
But I think that's beyond the scope of this agreement.
Okay. I just didn't know if that ultimately would affect the cost at that point.
What they, I'm sorry.
That's decisions we make after the fact.
Okay.
What they've committed to providing December 16th are the budgetary cost estimates for the various alternatives. And that's what we would be taking out for an RFP. And that's to allow this board to make a decision of whether we're going to be a Milford-only solution or a regional solution. And if it's regional, I guess we're going to find out now if they can do it as MAC Base or a Milford-run regional solution. Because we have to make that decision in December.
But what's for us right now is just agreement of the changes that have been recommended. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes, hevers, motion carries. Thank you. And...
The vote, four to zero?
The vote is four to zero.
Okay.
Selectman Duziak abstaining. Okay, with that, we will go on to our next discussion. Joan?
So this is a follow-up to last week's discussion. After looking into the question of whether this position would get added into the default, we did find out that it would not be added to the default automatically. That was Chris, that was your question. We also, with Mr. Bender, we did some work on the floater position, and you can see in your packet that there's a job description for the floater. The position, if it's approved to go, would be covered in what's left in the town clerk budget for the end of the year, would be covered for the whole year.
Including benefits.
Correct, correct. And then the, and then next year, it could be covered with the part-time, with the money that's in the part-time, if, on the default. So I'm going to add it to the budget as the floater position, 70% of the town clerk's office, 30% in the other departments, community development, finance, and town administration. But if, for some reason, the budget fails and we go to the default, there would be enough in there to cover that position through half the year.
Okay. So, you said for half a year?
Yeah.
Okay. So the amount that you have for your part-time people will cover the benefits and the salary of a full-time person for one half-year.
Correct.
So what you would be looking for is an additional half-year in the next budget. And that's really the only thing at risk here, is whether the vote is approved of a year's worth of full-time person, or you get a half-year in the budget.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Labonte?
So if the budget fails, you've covered six months.
Correct.
After the six months, so you lose your employee and you have no part-timers the rest of the year.
I would still have part-time. That's why I was saying, there's...
I thought that, I thought the two part-timers would cover the full-timer salary for the first half of the year.
It actually covers more, because I can't be without another...
I understand, I guess that's what I'm saying. I don't want to see you get stuck with no help, is where I'm going.
No, so then I would have to go to a part-time person for the rest of the year, because obviously we have four elections next year. I couldn't have nobody. So I could cover the full-time person for the half-a-year and then go to just a part-time person for the rest of the year.
In community development, finance, and town administration, is that money already in their budget, or would that be added to their budget for next year?
We'd add it into the budget for next year.
So there was no floater in this year's budget?
Not in this year's budget, no.
I thought that was one of the things we had talked before, as far as the cost, meaning because other departments had the money already or something, that it wouldn't actually change?
Well, it was, it was like maybe helping to reduce some of the overtime was the comment. But whether that's in the budget or not for the other departments, I'm not sure.
So this is coming at a cost, ultimately, what I'm saying. I mean, I got the impression before that we were just basically shifting stuff around that would have covered...
That was, that's this year we're shifting around to cover for next year in the budget. It would be additional monies into the budget for that full-time person for the whole year.
So if that, that person will not be within town administration and community development this year.
Correct.
So come next year, the expectation is you're going to add some for those two items. So what happens if the budget fails? So basically that you're 30% short, because you claim that you'll have your 70% for half a year. So where does that leave us?
And addition to that is, where would the money come from to hire part-timers for the next six months?
Well, because, well, I have, I almost have a full-time position without benefits in the budget right now. That's already in the budget. That was for the part-timers. So next year, I could cover the full-time position for half the year, and then there would be less part-time money left for the, for the rest of the year. Yeah.
I didn't do that math with you for 2020. I agree with you on what you have in your budget this year and being able to cover the expense for the balance of the year.
Right.
To answer your question, in 2020, we would be adding one full-time person, and 70% of that cost for salaries would be in the town clerk's budget. The other 30% would be split, 10% each, for community development, finance, and admin. And the benefits cost would all be in the one location under employee benefits.
Okay. So if that fails, basically, that kind of goes away, but then you can still use the money that you have in your budget to carry you through as far as you can.
Correct, correct.
All right, so let's get...
So that you're going to eliminate two part-times out of your budget for next year, then?
Correct. Right now, I have three part-times.
That's right. It would be a shift from, from part-time to full-time.
Into the full-time.
You don't happen to have the number, meaning, I know it sounds crazy, but numbers actually are easier.
So in, so right now...
Meaning dollar numbers.
Right now, in the part-time is 34.6. That will go down to $7,500. And then it increases the full-time by $36,000. Not, it's not a full incre, it's just shifting. So you take the 34.6, that goes to 7,500, and then 36 goes into the full-time salary.
Plus the benefits.
Right, but the benef, right. And the benefits is...
Still a number you've got to take into consideration, meaning...
Correct.
I guess I'd like to see the difference in all the numbers, but either way, that's just me.
Well, I haven't heard you say you had enough money to cover the entire year.
I don't have enough to cover the entire year.
For next year, 2020. The way you're proposing it right now, if the default budget comes to fruition, at three-quarters of the way through the year, you're going to lose, and it's just going to leave you there. That doesn't make sense to me, because all of a sudden, we're going to be pushed into an emergency situation, because you won't be able to handle the office by yourself, and we'll have to reallocate money to cover your budget.
We already have one full-time person in the office. And then I have a full-time person worth of salary in the part-time budget. I just don't have benefits.
The default budget for next year would include the same part-time people that are in the current budget.
But that'll be enough to cover us for the year.
Yeah, but this, what she's proposing is just to get her through until next March. And then with the new budget, then we'll have to figure out and justify the need for another person.
Right. So if the budget were to fail for March, at March, then March would have to, right after the voting, the next day, I'd be sitting down trying to figure out, "How am I going to make this work till the rest of the year?"
Which still puts you somewhat in the same place Mr. Putnam just said, because you will have already utilized full-time hours, if you want to say, out of that part-time budget in the first three months of the year.
Correct.
Where maybe that part-time budget wouldn't have got expended until 45% of the year.
Well, also, we could have potentially trained six different people, and then you spend all that money, and you can't, when you bring in somebody that isn't qualified as a municipal agent, you have to spend almost 60 days training them, and they can't do anything. They're not, they're just there observing until they go to class.
So in that job description, that's, that, did I read that right, that you'd be hiring somebody already certified?
Correct. Absolutely. Otherwise, there's no point. Right.
Well, the situation I'm avoiding is next year, even though I won't be here, that you come back to the next board and are looking for help halfway through the year, it's not budgeted, and you're going to end up taking somebody else's money to make yours make the year.
But that...
Well, next year's a different...
It really has no bearing on what's before us right now.
Right, right before us, what we have right now is to get us through till the next budget.
Well, that's why we're talking about default budget, because it does have a bearing on how, what she's proposing for next year.
We're not changing the default budget. The default budget...
So I understand. If the default budget comes up, there'll be two part-time people in there with no benefits. But that doesn't cover a full-time person with benefits till the end, which you've already stated. So what's going to happen when that money runs out?
She would be proposing in the next budget to have an additional full-time person.
But that fails.
But I think to go where Mike's going on, if two part-time positions will cover a full-time employee for six months, so if you have that full-time employee for three months, then you've already taken out another part of the year?
It's really that, that, so the money that's in the budget now would cover more than six months, it would cover like probably nine months. I just used six months as an example. Maybe they'd stay four months or five months, but I would have to leave enough in the budget to bring back in part-time people.
What do benefits cost, and what do we figure benefits annually on this position?
It's 25 to 50% of the salary.
Is it a single health insurance or a two-person or a family?
I think you have to figure on a family, no matter what, meaning you've got to figure worst-case scenario, anything less is a bonus.
Right. So it's going to be approximately $25,000?
Yeah.
Yeah.
What would be the difference, and I'm just, I know it's not the ideal option you're looking for, but what is the difference instead of going to a full-time now? I understand you're saying you'd have to hire part-time, which is going to take you six weeks or whatever to train. The difference between if you hired your full-time after voting in March?
The difference is that there's a presidential, vice president, I mean, a presidential primary coming up. There is... There is... Basically, what I said last week was that I would close a day because I really don't want to spend the time to, and I would wait because I don't want to go train somebody and spend two months training somebody so that they can get certified and then they'll go off and get a full-time job with benefits someplace else because that's what everybody's looking for. So if you find a place you can come in part-time and get certified, you know, then you're going to look and you're going to do, you're going to go someplace else as soon as you can. That, that's the reason why I would opt to not hire additional part-time. Try to make it through with the part-time that I have till elections, but that's kind of crazy.
Why didn't we budget it that way last year for this year? Why didn't we budget a full-timer instead of two part-timers?
Well, because we were doing okay with our part-timers last year when we did the budget. And the economy wasn't as good and there wasn't Merrimack, Bedford, Nashville looking for full-time certified municipal agents back then. I think they all...
We didn't have any turnover in part-timers last year. This year, we've lost two out of three, three out of four.
Three out of four.
Three out of four.
So that's the...
You know, and...
I mean...
You know, bear in mind...
I have one part-time right now.
One left. Yeah, bear in mind that voters are not necessarily rejecting the budget because you included a full-time person to bolster the staff. So if we do get a default budget, what voters are telling us is that they're not accepting the proposed budget and they're giving us a bottom-line default budget. We then have to go through and determine what's included and what's excluded so that we can hit that bottom-line number. And if the board chooses to include per part-time person, well, we've got to take it from someplace else. But in the calculation of the default budget, that full-time person is not going to be included in the calculation. That makes sense? Doesn't mean that you can't decide that you're going to include that person.
Okay. Is there a motion regarding this?
I'll make a motion. We go ahead and approve the full-time person.
Motion by Mr. Putnam to approve the full-time person. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectman Duziak. Discussion. There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Abstaining?
Abstaining.
Okay.
I'm just sitting out.
Well, I mean, parliamentary-wise, if you're here, you should be voting if you don't have a conflict of interest.
I'm going to go against him.
Okay. Vote is 3-1-1. The motion carries. Thank you.
Pumpkin Festival parking update. I'll talk very quickly so we can have a little break. So we're less than two weeks away from Pumpkin Festival. The parking is going to be much the same as last year. Milford High School will be available on Saturday and Sunday. Milford Middle School will be available Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. And a shuttle will run from both of those lots. We'll also have parking available from Keys Park on Elm Street. We'll have overflow parking at the 127 Elm portion of Keys Park. And we'll have parking at Milford Police Station. And those are available Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. So that's the basic rundown and we'll post this on the town website under Pumpkin Festival.
Yeah, thank you. We have a public hearing this evening for the acceptance of expenditures of unanticipated funds over $10,000. There is $268,876, the 2018 firefighter assistance grant for the purchase of SCBA units. That's S-C-B-A, not underwater. And face pieces. And for the Police Department Federal Grant, New Hampshire Safety Project Number 20-120, $16,119. Are there any comments regarding those? Sing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'm sorry.
The 5% match, is that in the budget or is that being taken from somewhere else? I was trying to catch Chief Flaherty before the meeting, but I don't recall budgeting the 5% match. I'm sorry?
Captain, can you? Excuse me, chief.
There's a line item that's zero right now, so we would have to find that money in the budget.
So we'll have to find it. So that's doable, that you can scrounge it somehow? Yeah, we're meeting on the budget Wednesday, Thursday, but I'm confident we'll find it. We're not going to walk away from...
Yeah, I understand.
$268,000.
The discussion. Sing none, is there a motion to... We'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion to approve the grant as...
Order, you're going to do the second one? It's all in one hearing?
Yeah, I mentioned the second one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion. We go ahead and approve both.
Okay, motion by Mr. Putnam to approve both. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectman Duziak. Any discussion? There being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. I'm going to jump down to the consent calendar. There's two things on there. One is request for approval of one petition and poll license at 78/8Y Valhalla Drive. And second, a request for approval of Conservation Commission to host the Ghost Train Rail Trail 15-miler and ultra-race October 19th and 20th, 2019. Is there anything to be removed from the consent calendar?
Make a motion. We approve it as presented.
Motion by Mr. Putnam to approve the consent calendar as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectman Duziak. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay. Eyes have it, motion carries. And I'll open it up briefly if anyone wanted public comments. That was the only thing left. Sing none. We will be in recess and we'll reconvene when we get together with the other boards. Be in recess. So, all right, good evening and then we'll bring the board back into session. This is our 6 o'clock meeting, dispatched discussion with the Milford, Monvernon, and Wilton Boards of Selectmen. For the benefit of the members here, I think probably first of all, we'll just introduce the boards. My name is Gary Daniels. I will be chairing the meeting. I'm chair of the Milford Board. And from your left, at the head table here, we have Selectman Chris Labonte, Vice Chair Paul Darji, Selectman Laura Duziak, and Selectman Michael Putnam. And Jack, I'll turn it over to you to introduce the Milford, excuse me, the Monvernon Board and any other... Actually, I'll also point out, we have our Town Administrator Mark Bender and Tina Philbrick, who will be also here taking minutes this evening. And if you'd introduce your board and any other staff that you may have here.
I just, Jack Esposito, Chair of the Monvernon Board, and Tim Barry is Selectman at Monvernon. Our other select person, Tim Robes, couldn't make it this evening. She had a family affair come up.
Okay, thank you. Kermit?
Kermit Williams, Chair of the Wilton Board, and Kellig Wassano is with us and Matt Fish was not able to attend.
Thank you.
And our Town Administrator is present, Paul Branscombe, along with a criteria of other Wilton folks that are interested in the subject.
All right, thank you very much. For the benefit of those around the board, I did hand out an agenda that has all the ground rules on it we had last time. I'm not going to take the time to go over those. They are exactly the same as they were before. And so we can go right down to the points of discussion at the bottom of the page. And what I've tried to do is to identify those things that we had discussed in the past that we didn't seem to be all in agreement on. And so I'm hoping that maybe we can just spend about maybe an hour and a half this evening at the most going through these. If you have anything to add to the list, we can throw that on as well. But let's, we'll just see if we can move this forward and maybe come to agreement on some of those things that we were separated on before. The first one was the agreement duration, which I know that there was a proposal to make a 10-year agreement at one point in time. The one we're under right now is a two-year, one that runs out at the end of 2020.
Prior to that, it was five years, though, right?
Prior to that, it was a five-year.
I think the rationale around a longer duration was the potential for doing some borrowing and that, I think there was a consensus, at least I heard a consensus, that the borrowing term ought to match up with the term of the agreement so that nobody would be essentially out of the agreement but still owing towards the cost of the upgrades.
Okay. No, I had brought in before the proposal, the difference between having dispatch do the borrowing versus the towns do the borrowing. And I don't know if that would have any other bearing. I mean, for one thing, it would put it back on the towns themselves as opposed to giving it, giving the authority to an entity to do the borrowing.
Not sure that... That was never brought up before.
Yeah, I'm not sure the entity actually can legally do the borrowing. Last time we discussed this new legislation, I think Paul brought the text in, that says that towns can band together to borrow for a common purpose. But it's still the towns that are borrowing the money and not the, and not some other entity. I think you could only, if we created a village-district kind of structure where, you know, multiple towns were part of a separate group for a particular purpose, then you could do something like that, but I don't think we want to go that direction.
So is there consensus then that, I think the options were that MAC Base could do the borrowing to purchase equipment of whatever, over a 10-year bond versus the town? Is there consensus that we would have the town do that as opposed to MAC Base?
I don't know. It's always been, it's always been MAC Base borrowing the money to buy the equipment, which is what it came about. And to go to each individual town, I know what they just, this legislature just authorized, that's going to be very difficult. I think it's better if MAC Base borrows the money or the entity, whatever you have, and then the towns are assessed their proportion.
My understanding is right now that MAC Base cannot borrow for 10 years.
I don't know about that.
Okay. Mr. Putnam?
My knowledge, MAC Base has never been able to borrow any money and never has. It's all been funded through...
Right.
The budget.
And any expenses had to be paid by, in that calendar year. And that's what started this whole thing a couple of years ago because the contract was to extend it so that it would ease the borrowing on the smaller towns. And I don't know where we're going to go from this, Gary, to tell you the truth. I don't know where we go. What Milford's going to do, I don't know. I understand you have a consulting firm that has a report that's due sometime in the end of the year or the beginning of the year. And it's within the one-year, so to speak, to the expiration of the present contract. And where do we stand on it? And I don't know. I don't know what's happening.
Okay, to answer your question on the consultant, we did approve a company that, to do the consulting for us. This evening, we had received the agreement. We made some proposed modifications to that agreement, which the Town Administrator will take back. And over the next few days, we'll iron those out. The plan right now is we have asked for them to shorten their dates so that we would have a final report by December 16th. Jason, you had?
Just to speak to the borrowing question, it was mostly correct. We can't borrow beyond the calendar year. Everything has to be paid within that, under the current contract. The IMA that my board spent a year and a half modifying had all those answers in it, too. You guys are kind of reinventing the wheel on that at this point. But like you said, Jack, until everybody decides they're in this together...
We don't know which way this whole thing is going.
No, and I think there, I think there, from me personally, there still are a lot of things outstanding and I'm not sure that I'm going to have all the information until the consultant comes back and gives us some figures and some options on the way things would work and how things were set up. I know it would help if we understood what each town needed to be part of a regional thing and to fix all the problems. I think that's one thing that we have all agreed on is that the fix needs to take care of the whole thing, not just one piece here, one piece here. Because over time, you run the risk that someone's going to be left behind because your voters don't approve something in a particular year. So, and I think that's when we talked, last time, we talked about a $3 million fix. I'm not sure if that's even the figure.
I understand. It could be less than that, no problem.
It could be less than that, could be more than that. But just saying that we don't really know. I mean, I, I think what I heard before was that Monvernon really didn't have much problem, that your communication is pretty much good with all of your services and really, all you really need is a signal. I think out of that $3 million, we had a $2.1 million problem that would include additional antennas and change in equipment upstairs if we were going to keep it at that location. Wilton, I believe, you had said particularly with the Fire Department, that there was some communication needs that were deficient there.
Yeah, we're actually already doing a lot of that. We're switching the Fire Department from low-band to high-band. And so we're paying for the cost of doing that. We've got a number of different things going on, including putting the mechanism for paging on high-band onto the MAC Base system so that they can page our firefighters the same way as they always do, except they would be using a different signal. And that would get us to the point, right now, we're sort of, we have, we do certain things with high-band, certain things with low-band, and we want to get away from the low-band because it's really outdated technology. So we're doing that now.
Does that solve your dead spot issues?
No.
So that's a...
Theoretically, communication should be a little better with the high-band than the low-band, but the dead spot issues, I think, they were really more identified with the Police Department and they've been using high-band equipment already, so that's more of an antenna issue, I think.
Just one second, Gary. Just to readdress the timing of this report. We have, presently, we have a two-year contract that expires the end of 2020. On December 15th to 16th, we're going to get a report of the costs. We have two weeks to make a decision and we have, and we have two weeks to send in a letter that we're going to withdraw. And I can assure you, Monvernon does not want to withdraw unless we have to. Unless the present contract could be extended for another year or whatever. But in the meantime, you're giving us and Wilton two weeks to make a decision of a significant amount of money. And you force the letter of resignation onto us and we don't want to withdraw because we would lose our share, the cost of money that... because we would lose our share, the cost of money that we have into the equipment, and we don't want to be the first out, and we don't want to be the last one here either. And we quite honestly could not afford the increase that, that looks like it could be coming down the road.
And I, I think you can include Milford in the same situation.
Okay.
We've, we've got two, two weeks to make that decision.
I mean, it's, it's...
I understand it's compressed, but their, their, their original proposal took us into, you know, spring almost, and
I understand.
We needed an answer before that, so...
Then maybe one of the things we should be thinking about is extending the present contract another year.
I think it is...
That would, that would give us all breathing room to sit back and make rational decisions instead of impulsive decisions.
We, we could also make a agreement, a written modification to the contract that says that for this particular time, we could extend the, or reduce the exit notice from a year to nine months or 10 months or something like that.
Either way, but we have to have more time to make a decision than two weeks over Christmas. I think that's fair for everybody.
I agree.
Okay.
I'd like to chime in. I would be in favor of extending it one year, because I, even if we went on our own and did something, I don't see us having a system in place by the end of 2020. It's going to roll into 2021 somehow. So, I, I think another year on the contract and have it the end of 2021 makes sense.
I'd actually like to see it two years, for that same reason.
I agree, because otherwise, we're going on a year-to-year basis, and that is not a way to operate. I think we need to have a little bit longer term, and I agree that a two-year would be much more feasible for everyone involved.
When I saw on your agenda here, points for discussion, the duration of the agreement, I was just going to stay quiet until the opportune time came to say that, obviously, the longer the agreement is, the more stable the organization will be. And then, so, I'm, I'm for a delay, and, and, and I think my fellow selectmen are too. I'm new to the board. Perhaps you can ask, answer a question for me, because I've heard a million different things, and this is my first opportunity to sit down here with the board of selectmen from Milford, and it's the opportunity for me to ask if, if Milford wants to have their own dispatch all by themselves, because this is what I hear, and I'm like the little, the little boy who's calling out the emperor with no clothes. I'm, I'm here to ask you, what, what are your intentions?
Well, that's why I...
Because, you know, you know that I'm hearing the scuttlebutt, and what the scuttlebutt is, that Milford might want to go out on their own and not be associated with Wilton and Mont Vernon anymore, so I'm going to play that role and, and ask you right straight up what, what, what the thoughts are here.
That's, that's why I stated about five or 10 minutes ago, that we had, we had contracted with a consultant who is going to be looking at options of keeping MAC Base together and what the needs are for a regional solution, what it would cost Milford to go alone, and I think we also threw another mix in tonight, kind of two things for Milford going alone. One of them, if it, if it was, we added to the police station and ran it from there as, as a regional or a standalone, as well as from MAC Base, existing MAC Base area, as a regional or standalone. I think those, I think those were the four things that we, by the time we got through hashing it over this evening, that, that we were going to look for the consultant to come back and, and give us what those options would cost.
Okay, so again, I'm going to, I'm going to plead anger, it's one more time. Is Milford paying for this study, or is MAC independently, all by itself?
$85,000, yes.
Yeah, so, so you didn't, you didn't ask Mont Vernon and Wilton to contribute to a study for the future of MAC Base? You've gone ahead and just commissioned a study paid for by yourselves to determine whether or not you want to stay in MAC Base?
That is correct.
That's the impression I get.
We, we put in a warrant article to build, to build a standalone.
I see.
And
Good.
At our deliberative session, that failed, and it was amended to have it as, to hire a consultant, independent consultant for 80, no more than $85,000, to give us the options so that we could better understand what our options were with the existing configuration versus going another one, because there are a lot of moving parts.
This is great, Gary. Thanks for filling me in, because these, all these things you've told me, I've heard little bits and pieces of them, and you know when you hear it in bits and pieces, it's not perhaps as accurate as when you get the whole big picture explained by you.
Right.
So, thanks again, and so like, why are we even having any discussions without the results of your consultants?
Because there, we felt that as far as intermunicipal agreement itself, there are things in there that we probably could discuss, particularly if we were going to end up going the regional route that would save some time
Right.
Later, and, you know, things, things like the duration, which kind of ties into the borrowing authority. I mean, obviously, and Jack had expressed before, that for, for a town like Mont Vernon, if, if they were going to have borrowing authority, the longer the better, as far as managing the cost of it.
Right.
So, that, you know, it had been brought up as a 10-year possibility. That kind of fits in with the duration, and I, and I agree with the comments that have been made, that, that whatever the, or the borrowing authority and, and the agreement should, should run concurrently with each other. So, you, you wouldn't be, have one town that would be borrowing for five years and another for 10, or, or something like that, but, I mean, conceivably, I suppose each town could do their own, own thing. They would just be responsible for their share of apportionment, which, you know, I think we had, we had pretty much settled on, that population was working before, and if I'm not mistaken, that we looked at again in 2020 with, with the, with the new census.
Mm-hmm. It's a change of the proportion, right?
A portion.
Yes.
But anything we do here tonight is moot, because we have to wait and see what you people are going to do, what Milford's going to do on the board.
As I state...
Stay with MAC Base or not, not.
We don't know at this point in time, but, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't say it's necessarily moot. You know, I mentioned before, and it's, we've got it before you, that, you know, anything that we may agree on tonight, you know, if we can agree on, for instance, voting rights and things like that, it's non-binding until every board signs than, than any new agreement that we might have. So, but, you know, it's, it's an opportunity for us to, to save some time, to get together and kind of get a feel for where our different towns are respectively, so that we, we can address anything that, that comes up that may be an issue that holds us back.
I think that we're trying to reinvent the wheel. We had put intermunicipal agreement together that Milford did not sign, and it has a lot of the different issues that we're discussing here in black and white, and I think that when it comes to the decision-making, once we move forward and we become partners and move forward with an agreement, I think we could start working off of that agreement we already have in place and make little, little adjustments. But I think we're just trying to recreate the wheel, and, and we're getting nowhere.
Well, I, I think we're, we're bringing some people who weren't involved in that up to date on what that was. There were some things in there, for instance, you know, like number two on there, the voting rights, that did not seem to be acceptable to Milford, the, with the way that it was proposed, which at that time, I believe, was one vote per town on that. And that, and the, working that in with the apportionment, I know that Selectman Darji had, you know, had voiced his opinion last time, that he thought that Milford should have 71% of, of the vote because Milford was paying 71% of the bill. So, I know we had a little bit of discussion on that. It seemed like we had, the consensus was they had kind of moved back, and I'm not including you in this, because I know you were staying firm on your, on your 71, but it had kind of moved back that Milford has two votes now, and each of the other towns have one vote. So, there is some give and take in there. The...
Isn't it two votes on budget and one vote on...
That was the proposal that you had come up with, which I have, I have a problem with that, because I can think of things that are non-financial that would have an effect, would have an effect that I, I think that Milford should still have its two votes. Right now, it has two votes on everything, so that would be actually decreasing the votes Milford has, has on non-financial. Any, anyone want to talk about voting rights? So...
What are you proposing?
Oh, I'm not necessarily proposing anything. I'm just saying that the consensus last time seemed, after the discussions of various positions, seemed to come back as just leave it the way it is. And I don't know if, if people are still thinking strongly that it should be changed or that it should be based on something other than population. I think we, we had some discussion on that.
Here's what happened to me this weekend. I already told you, folks, I, I'm not that familiar with the whole organization. I met this gentleman at Lamson Farm Days who, who used to live in Milford and, and moved to Bennington, and as I've told a lot of people, every time I get into discussion about running a town, our town in particular, it, it, it always, MAC Base always gets mentioned. I would never dream that a dispatch center could be so talked about, I won't say contentious, but talked about. So anyways, I met this really nice gentleman up in, up in Mont Vernon on Saturday, and he's familiar with MAC Base, really familiar with it, and, and he basically told me, he said, "Tim, the, it wasn't broken." So, I got another question for you. What, what doesn't Milford like about the way MAC Base is now?
I don't know. It's just so much that it's not what we don't like, it's what we can't do. We have, we have problems with our communication with, particularly with the, with the police department. There's some potential problems with the fire department.
So, can I, let me interject for a second, Gary, forgive me. So, I, I've actually heard, I heard more of that scuttlebutt, and I heard about what you just said. So, is that a problem that is Milford's problem, or is that MAC Base's problem, or is it a little bit of both?
Well, and this was the first question I brought up when we started meeting. Is MAC Base going to be a service, or is it going to be a system? Is it going to have all the infrastructure, or is it going to be a place that puts out a signal and each town is responsible for the towers that they need to communicate?
And their receivers and all, everything else.
Yes. And it seemed to be that there was consensus that they wanted MAC Base to be a system. Is that correct?
I think part of the issue that we talked about last time was that if you have multiple owners, then there's always the question, who's going to fix what? You know, if an antenna goes down, does that mean that the town the antenna's in has to go in and fix it? MAC Base, I think, right now are, they're the ones who are able to determine immediately when something needs to be fixed, and they can do it expeditiously, and I think doing anything else would make it worse. And we also talked about the fact that, at least in, in the case of antenna sites, they're often supporting multiple towns, so, you know, how we would divide that up.
Well, it would truly be a different structure. I mean, I would say, go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jack.
The infrastructure of MAC Base is a responsibility of the member towns. The fact that each town has its own different types of equipment and everything, that's the town's responsibility.
Yes.
And we, as a small town, we have a lot less expense, a lot of vehicles and everything replaced, and we maintain our own, our own communication system that is supported by the transmitters from MAC Base. And that's what MAC Base is responsible for, to take care of that. The individual towns would take care of their own person, their own equipment for their, for their fire, police, or ambulance, or whatever it might be. And that's not a MAC Base problem, it's a town problem.
No, but what, what is a MAC Base problem?
The cost I'm talking about.
Yeah, if we're going to consider MAC Base as a system, what is a MAC Base problem, and it's a problem for each of the towns, and particularly for Mont Vernon, because Mont Vernon doesn't have the needs that Wilton has or Milford. I mentioned, out of our $3 million problem, 2.1 million of it is Milford, and we need more antennas to hit, to get the dead spots, ditto with, I think, the problems that, that Wilton has. So, the question was right in the beginning, are the towns willing, is, is Mont Vernon willing to pay to fix Wilton and Milford's problem?
So, basically, correct me if I'm wrong, MAC Base has not been run as a system. I get what you're saying about the system versus a service, so it's not been run as a system in the past?
I think it has been run as a system, but it's deficient in that we lack infrastructure to fulfill all of our communication needs.
I see, because in other words, parts of the system have broken down, and...
I think they just have never been addressed.
Well, parts, parts of the system are deficient, and they're primarily your parts, because you just said the $2 million of the deficiency is addressing Milford's needs as opposed to the, the other two towns here, because our end of the system is, is number one, smaller, as you just pointed out, and less costly, and, 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 and probably, it's, obviously, we just, we need, we need less investment in the sys, our end of the system.
A large piece of this, though, is the system's outdated. You know, it's, it's 1980's technology, and I think there, there certainly have been discussions that, you know, we could have been sort of incrementally updating as we went along, but, you know, that wasn't done, and so we have now a lot of old technology. And I think, I'm assuming that what will come back from your consultant will be a new set of, of equipment, you know, transmitters and antennas and, and communications equipment and all the structure that supports it, that, you know, will cost some significant amount of money, whether it's $3 million or not, who knows? But I think you can't really say, for instance, that Mont Vernon doesn't need it, because it will be, you know, the, the same technology will be supporting all three towns. It'll be
The central equipment.
It'll be new transmitters and, and, you know, new, new technology all around, and hopefully, that means that it'll not only last the 10 years or whatever the agreement is, but, you know, out into the future.
But, but Mont Vernon may not need the extra four or five antennas that Milford needs to complete its communication system.
So, but, if we're treating it as a system, then we should address the needs of all the partners in the system, all the pieces of the system.
Agreed.
So, in other words, is this, the consultant is going to come back with, with suggestions to address the needs of the shortfalls in all three towns?
No, because it's, they're going to look primarily at Milford's needs.
Because you hired them.
Because we hired them.
But, but Gary, this kind of seems like we're getting away from the system if we've hired these consultants to just talk about Milford as opposed to Milford, Mont Vernon, and Wilton.
I'm just following the directive of the voters.
Well, you understand where I'm coming from.
I understand what you're saying. I mean, ideally, this probably should have been something that was initiated by the MAC Base Board.
Because then we could sit down, and we could come up with a 10-year agreement duration, and we could, a 10-year loan to borrow all the money to modernize the whole system instead of just Milford's.
I understand, and...
So, when your consulting contract is complete, are you telling us that you won't have a design that could be implemented to support all of us? It would only be the design that could support Milford?
I would expect that what we would have is, we would have a design that would complete Milford's. The other towns obviously tie in now. If you have something where you needed enhancement on one of your emergency services, I would expect that you would figure out what that needs to be, you know, whether it's an additional antenna to take care of a dead spot or two, or something like that. I mean, if there was a way that you were able to tie into whatever this consultant is... I mean, if there was a way that you were able to tie into whatever this consultant is doing?
Well, this design, though, it needs to be, I mean, we're talking about updating the entire system. So even if Mont Vernon didn't need any new antenna sites, they would need new, a new repeater and new, you know, equipment at whatever antenna sites they have, you know, you'd need to hook into the microwave that you guys are putting in, and, you know, there would be a whole set of implementation that I would hope for $86,000, you're getting a complete system design, so you could then take that and go out to bid for the complete upgrade. And if the $86,000 is only paying to figure out what Milford needs, then we won't have a system that we can build when that's done. We'll have to go find, figure out, you know, how, what new equipment is needed to be able to bring our system, our piece of the system, up to date with whatever your consultant's proposing. I mean, that seems like a short-sighted plan if you're just doing Milford.
Again, this came as a change to one of our Warren articles, so we would have had nothing to do with Wilton and Mont Vernon in that Warren article anyway. And we're walking a fine line here, because, I mean, I can't go and ask Milford taxpayers to pay to find out what problems Wilton has and pay a consultant to go out and do that.
So what, why?
My understanding is that there will be an opportunity for the department heads of the various towns, is that correct, that will be getting together with the consultant to share with that consultant what problems each town has.
Yeah, so I already heard that, and so certainly, I made the assumption when I heard that, that your consultant was designing a system, not just designing a Milford, the Milford portion of the system.
So why wasn't, why didn't MAC Base hire the consultant to give us an update on the whole system? I mean, I get the system argument, but like, we're not following through with the system. We're every man for themselves here. And so why didn't we go to MAC Base instead of the town of Milford? What, whom in the town of Milford wanted to kind of ditch the system and the joint ownership of the system between the three towns in favor of hiring a consultant to tell Milford what to do? It just kind of seems, it just seems kind of one way.
The Warren article, or an article went on the warrant last time by virtue of a majority of the vote of the Milford selectmen to put out for a new standalone.
So basically, you guys really want to stand, you guys really want to have your own dispatch?
We're not talking to the same board.
Oh, okay.
Okay? Some of the members are the same, some have changed.
I see.
When it got to deliberative session, there was a very close vote, but they changed the Warren article to, because it was a, I think it was 2.1 million, 2.7 million?
2.5.
They turned down that bond article to change it to an $85,000 consultant.
I see. So I have another question.
Yes.
Can you tell me right now, amongst the five of you, what your plans are for MAC Base, for the system? Do you want to retain the system, or do you want to go your own way?
I don't have the...
I think that's a fair question.
Well, and I personally, and I'm only speaking for myself here, I don't have the information I need, which I expect to get from the consultant, to regard the price, because if it comes in that, and I'm just, and I have no idea what the prices are going to be, but if there is a Milford solution that comes in that's a half million dollars less than staying with MAC Base, I need to figure out how I'm going to sell it to my constituents.
I understand. I'm a selectman too. I understand. I get the point.
So this is why, for me personally, I need to wait to get that information from the consultant. And I'm sorry that there's only two weeks left to the year by the time that information...
Because we need it just as badly as you do.
I understand. But I'll let Jason answer the question regarding the MAC Base.
As far as your question of MAC Base hiring a consultant to figure this out, we did, years ago. Two years ago. Might have been three at this point, at a cost of $3,000. We went through and comprehensively said, this is what we should do in Mont Vernon, this is what we should do in Wilton, this is what we should do in Milford, and we gave that back to my Board of Governors, who brought it back to their Boards of Selectmen. And every time we've tried to make incremental improvements in the system, instead of a giant multimillion-dollar plan, it's been turned down on the budget side of things. That's where we run into some of the challenges with the two votes between you two and two votes on their end. That's the historical challenge that goes with it. Since then, Milford had their own study with MRI, which came up with the, you could do it on your own, or you could stay regional and do this, and now we are where we are. But I assure you that...
What's your recommendation?
Speaking wholly non-selfishly?
Yeah.
Speaking as an end user, because, as you know, I also work as a police officer in your town. I've always seen the benefits of regional dispatch center. The ability for your backup to listen to what you're doing right now versus having a scan on the radio on a different channel versus a phone call to say, hey, can you back my cop up? Hey, can you bring another fire truck to this scene? It's a lot better when everybody knows what everybody else is doing. And regional dispatch centers provide that, even in the terms of, in the current situation, where an officer on the far end of Wilton can't hear an officer on the far end of Milford, but there's a dispatcher in the middle that can hear them both right now. And that makes a difference. I've always been a huge proponent of regional dispatch centers. When I worked as a police officer before, when I worked as a fireman before, I've always been with regional centers. And working this side of the radio that I do now, been there for over 20 years, I'm a firm believer in MAC Base.
What do we need to do to fix the situation?
We need updates. We have large-scale updates that need to happen, because, over the course of time, so many small fixes have been turned down at the budget side of things.
So in other words, we need to spend that 3.1 million dollars?
I won't say it's that number. No, I won't say it's that number.
We need to spend a lot of money.
We need to spend a significant amount of money. We've had numbers everywhere from 1.8 to now 3.1.
And I think that's the one thing that we all agree on right now.
Right, we do, we do. And I'd like to sit here and say, I find it hard to believe that it would be cheaper for you people to go out on your own than to upgrade the regional system that we have, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't be able to say anything like that without the information that you've hired somebody to give you.
From the beginning, I can support and defend an increase to the town, Mount Vernon, for the necessary equipment to be upgraded to, to say, the modern level. But I have a difficult time, and I could not support replacing equipment. That's Milford's responsibility. We did it at Mount Vernon, we've done it a few years ago, we're up to date. We have more to do, but we're doing it on our own expenses. But I say, I can support the MAC Base infrastructure improvements, but I have no, I cannot support, supporting what Milford's problem is with their communication system.
Okay. And so there you start to see some of the dynamics in this, because basically, what Jack is advocating for is, he needs a service. Others are saying we need a system.
I agree with him. I'm with him. I see the benefits of the system, but there, you haven't really run it as a system. You've run it as a service, and...
No, we have run it as a system because MAC Base has been taking care of the infrastructure, regardless of where it is.
So if infrastructure fails in Mont Vernon, Jason will send somebody up there to fix it. You guys don't, you know, you fix it yourselves?
No.
Right. MAC Base fixes it. That's the main element of the system, is that MAC Base is fixing things and, you know, maintaining the system wherever it is.
Kermit, we're talking about infrastructure, not things that, we're not talking about things that break. You're talking about things like a service call. We're talking about, like, we buy our repeaters and our antennas and stuff like that, and we're contracting with the cell phone tower. MAC Base isn't doing that. We're taking, we're doing that.
So your MAC Base transmitters in Mont Vernon are...
No, I think he's talking about the local equipment. Every town, every town is taking care of their local...
That's what Jack and I are talking about.
That's true for all of us. That's true for all of us. That's not part of this deal, is, you know, like you said, we're not going to include new police radios and, you know, that kind of stuff. It's all about the equipment that currently exists, that MAC Base currently has, and I don't know the configuration in your town, but I certainly know what it is here in Wil, well, what it is in Milford and in Wilton. You know, there are multiple antenna sites, and there's transmitters and other equipment that are each, at each of those sites, and it's maintained by MAC Base, because MAC Base needs to be sure that everything is up and running. So they're the ones that can respond quickly when something goes out, correct, Jason?
That's not an issue, Kermit, with maintaining it. We have no problem with that. I'm just saying that...
That's what we pay our assessment for, is to have it run and maintained.
To me, that's the difference between a system and a service. A service is where, you know, you somehow run your own antenna sites and he just talks to them.
I don't know. The semantics on this thing right now, but it's just...
Yeah, he's running and maintaining the service. It is like Jack said, it's semantics. We're okay with that. Jack's point is the one that I've been alluding to, that I heard through the scuttlebutt, that, well, the problem is that Milford needs a bunch of new receivers for all their trucks, because they can't, their radios don't work anymore, and they either want MAC Base to pay for them, or else they're going to go out on their own. That's the scuttlebutt that I heard last spring.
No one has proposed for MAC Base to pay for the local equipment.
You can tell me, I already think that that was incorrect information, but impression is everything. You know that. Impression will trump reality nowadays, and that's the impression that's out there, is that, like, Milford needs stuff, and they're going to decide, maybe if they have to spend all this money, they're going to be on their own instead of sharing with the other two towns.
I'd say, for the most part, just to kind of simplify things, the centralized equipment, which is what we use upstairs, and the antennas and the things that go on the antennas are what we're considering, the infrastructure.
That's correct. That's correct. Great, 100%.
And again, Milford...
And how you get your equipment to that antenna is a local problem.
Gary, I have a question.
Yeah.
If, and I guess this is just for clarification for myself. So if it was deemed that Milford needed, had a dead spot area and needed another tower, whether that tower was going to be utilized, obviously depending on location, meaning maybe a tower could be put up in the west end of Milford if there was a dead spot there that could benefit Wilton, even Mount Vernon, I guess, depending on terrain, who would buy that antenna?
MAC Base.
Okay. That's what I thought, but I just wanted to clarify...
That's not an issue.
Sure.
The equipment to operate MAC Base is not an issue.
Okay.
Okay?
No, I just, like I said, I just want to clarify that one.
Okay.
That's the way I feel. That's fair enough.
Want to hash that one anymore?
Well, I want to add that part of my decision-making process is the ability for these three towns to get along and be able to develop this inter-municipal agreement. Now, if we're going to sit here all night banging heads together over 71% versus 12% or whatever, then at some point, it becomes not worth savings to deal with as a system. We have, if we're going to be partners, we've got to be able to sit down and be amicable and come up with an agreement that's good to all of us and not, you know, one-sided to Milford or one-sided to Wilton or whatever. It's, we have to be able to get along, and that's a big part of which decision I'm going to decide. And obviously, I don't know what to do at this point. I mean, I was involved with MAC Base for 12 years as a dispatcher. I ran it for four years. I was on the Board of Governors for the last 13 years, and I'm at a loss. I don't know what direction to go. It's worked great for 30 years.
That's what I heard this weekend.
The problem is the equipment has broken down, and it's been band-aided and duct taped together for years. The FAA rules and regulations have changed, FCC, I mean, which are limiting us to our power of the transmitters, which affects our distance, we're able to talk to people, hence, we need more...
It's just unfortunate that you had this Warren article come through that gives the impression that Milford really don't care about the system. They're ready to go on their own.
Rather than listening to the scuttlebutt, Tim, come to us and ask us.
I am. This is my first time here, and I'm full of questions.
Don't listen to scuttlebutt.
Right. I've done nothing but ask you the questions to get clarification here for what is really going on.
Well, Jack?
We've said this from the beginning, two, three years ago, when we knew all this problem was coming up. We got to extend the financing period, eating the burden on the taxpayers and the local towns. One year was not going to work. That's where this whole thing started. And MAC Base was working, and probably still working fine. And Milford's always had the two votes, the one vote for Wilton and Mount Vernon, et cetera, et cetera, and all we wanted to do was extend the borrowing period for a longer period of time to ease it out, because we couldn't swing a couple hundred thousand dollars or $150,000 in one year. And that's all it came down to, and all this has been downhill since then. And it's, that's the way we feel about it. Just extend the borrowing period so we can get it done and get the infrastructure done, and we have a good system.
But I also think we need to have something with the voting so that we don't get stalemate, because that's what's been happening with the budget part of it. Wilton and Mont Vernon have voted yes to make improvements, and Milford has voted it down. So that's why things have not been being upgraded. And that's my understanding, is Milford has been putting the stop. No, we need to do something different with the voting so that that cannot happen. Otherwise, we continue to go down the same road, and there's no improvements. So then we come up to this situation, and Milford is trying to force our hands of them trying to go on their own or stay a community-run dispatch.
Let's go back to, let's go back to the points for discussion, and let's talk about having a long-term agreement and long-term borrowing authority, so that, Jack's point, and it's got to be your point too. You're a small town as well. If we need to, let's throw this out there, if we needed to spend $3 million on the system, the infrastructure in the system, there's no way that either Wilton or Mont Vernon could cough that up, that share of it, for one year, and who would want to just cough it all up for one year of membership in the system? So let's address this. Let's talk about having a longer agreement duration. Let's move forward, even though you don't have, I get what you want to do, Gary. You want to make, you want to come up with some ideas that are in place for whether or not will help you inform your decision when you get that consultant's thing. It'll help, it'll be helpful if you have answers to these questions here. And your point is a good one, obviously, and I'm green on it. So I just got a little education about the voting thing, and so that's something that's got to be worked on. But we, I think we could probably all agree. I heard at the very outset of our discussion, nobody wanted to go for any less than a couple of years.
You know, it seems like 10 years seem to be the most consensus.
I guess I'd like to agree with Mr. Berry, and I personally feel, from a board member on the Milford Board, I feel that if we're not, if we're not going to get results until December at some point, and I agree as far as you need information to make a decision, I personally feel, in the meantime, and I've said this before, it's the same thing with MAC Base. You still have to have an IMA that's been discussed and agreed upon amongst everybody. If we're going to sit and wait until we get a discussion to deal with the IMA, so even when you get the information from the consultant, we're still not going to have anything to compare it to on the IMA side if we haven't dealt with it.
I just thought that things could be done concurrently. All right, so I see consensus somewhat for 10 years. We're going to do that, the borrowing authority, the same. Let's talk about the voting rights for a minute, because I would have a hard time selling to my constituency the fact that I'm going to let 28, 29% of MAC Base tell us that we're paying 71% of the cost. So that's, that's where I have a problem there, and I think that's where Selectmen Darje's... And I think that's where Selectman Darje's opinion that 71% fell in because he was just looking at the cost of it. But I don't think it would be acceptable to either one of your towns if the tables were reversed. And Milford had, say, 18% and another one had 11%. And then we were telling your town, who had to spend 71% of the cost, that this was the way you were going to do it.
Here's a thought, Gary. Percentages are one thing. And of course, that's a valid way to look at the system and how the system is paid for. But there's three towns and it's not our fault that your town is bigger than our town. I think, and you know, your town is a bigger town, so there's more taxpayers in your town. So maybe this system of, there has to be a way to take the fact that you have three parties to the system and make the votes equal. And I don't know exactly how it works and apparently it's not working right now, two, one, two, two. But do you understand what I'm trying to say? There's three parties. You're not going to give one party 70% of the vote. That's not fair. But apparently it's not fair the way it's working right now either. So there's got to be some middle ground there. Because, you know what I mean? If there were, if there were four of us, you know, it's almost like a third, a third, a third. Each town should have one vote. I don't know.
If you wanted to go 33%, I would agree with you.
Well, I understand, but I prefaced it by saying, the percentage is one thing. The fact that there's three towns, and it's not our fault that you're a bigger town than us. When we're going to pay, you're going to pay your share and we're going to pay our share regardless of the voting.
And what we're paying for is emergency dispatch service, not, we're not paying for a vote and we're not paying really for the size of the population. And it's my understanding that Milford is actually getting the bargain out of this deal because you get more than 71% of the service that the, if you look at the call volume, Milford gets more than 71%, significantly more. I think it's closer to 80% of the call volume is Milford. And you guys are probably the big subsidizers in terms of using less than your 11%. And I think we subsidize a small amount as well. But, you know, what you're paying for is service, not, you're not paying for a vote.
Now we're back to service versus system again.
No, I mean.
No, we're not. We're just making the same point that.
What you are getting for your money is dispatch, not a vote. And that's what you should be paying for is, and right now it's a good deal because you pay 71%.
I guess it's a good deal until we feel we need something and we try pushing that idea and it gets blocked on a two-two vote. And I mean, that's kind of what the compromise is.
As Selectman Bossino said, you know, that's how we've been feeling for the last several years because we felt that the system needed to be upgraded and Milford hasn't been willing to spend the money.
And we wouldn't be in the predicament we are today as far as equipment needing to be all replaced at one time, had we been able to do upgrades periodically through each of the years.
Well, I, you know, I don't think along the way that there was any proposal that was going to give us the number of antennas that are being proposed now. So I'm not sure that all the things that have been proposed in the past would have fixed all of our problems. So, and I think that's part of the problem and that's why I'm actually happy that we're at least talking and we're in agreement now that everybody's problem needs to be fixed. And that is the base on which we've been able to have the conversations and go forward on this thing.
So personally, I would never be able to accept something where Milford had 71% of the vote because then we would basically be your customer. We, you know, with, sort of like how we are with your sewer system, you know, we send our stuff to you and we pay you whatever you're going to charge us and we don't really have a choice in how much that is. So, you know, I think we would not support that. You apparently wouldn't support equal votes. So it seems like we need to do something else. And I guess the something else is probably what's in the intermunicipal agreement. If the intermunicipal agreement spells out the equipment upgrades and, you know, all the things that we're going to do, then the issue that Selectwoman Boyceino brought up, which is, you know, that Milford hasn't been willing to pay for upgrades, is moot because that'll be in the intermunicipal agreement that will be doing equipment upgrades. I don't know what other issues in the past have come up that have been, as you said, blocked by the other two towns or that we felt like, you've blocked that the other two towns have wanted to do. And maybe we need to figure those out and come to an agreement on them rather than, you know, having them sort of up to the Board of Governors. You know, we should lay out a working agreement in, on paper that we can all sign on to. And then the things that the Board of Governors deal with would be more day-to-day, you know, decision-making and management and not things that where we feel like if you don't do this, the system isn't going to work. You know, we ought to figure those things out upfront.
And I guess as an extension of that too, as we talk about voting, we would also need to work out the process if another town were to become a member of that too. Because, I mean, you could bring in a town like Lineboro and I think 6% I think their share is. So I mean, with the three towns, they still have a minority. But yet if you were to add another vote, now you would have the minority controlling the majority again, so.
Well, I disagree Gary. The more I think about it, there's three towns, there should be three votes.
Should be equal votes.
It's not your, it's not our fault that you're a big town. Like I said, you have more taxpayers than we do. You can afford the 71%.
Well, I don't know that my taxpayers would agree.
Well, they're going for 100%.
Taxpayers are never going to agree to that. But you get, I think you might get my point. I think that if there's four towns, there should be four votes. If there's three towns, there should be three votes.
And if you go independently, your taxpayers are looking at closer to 100% than it is for 71% to stay as a community.
As I mentioned before, my understanding is that 100% came close to what it was going to cost us to pay for our 71% of the 2.1 million that we're talking about on the $3 million example. So again, I can't give you those figures until the consultant tells me. And it may be different, maybe right, I don't know.
Anytime there's a partnership built, you don't sit there and look at, if you're opening a business and you have a couple of people that are joining into the partnership, one person doesn't make more profit because they put more money into it than another one. They all have equal say and equal opportunity in that business. And that's how we should be looking at this whole community, is that each town has one vote.
And normally on a partnership, while no one would be making more profit, no one person would be putting in more money toward the success of that business than somebody else.
They can be. Sometimes there's people who have more money to put into the business where another person puts more of their time and effort into it. So it's not always an equal contribution to that business.
Like Kermit said, if you're taking 81% of the work that MAC Base is performing, then you're looking a little, you're looking a gift horse in the mouth by trying to get off the horse.
I'm not sure that figure is actually the correct figure.
Yeah.
I've heard numerous ones and I think.
Just one more time. You're paying 71% of MAC Base. You're a bigger town than we are. Just don't, I understand, you have pressure from your taxpayers, but it doesn't change the fact that you're a bigger town. You have more people. You have more police cars. You have more fire trucks. Of course, you're paying 71%. You're a bigger town. We're going to, we talked about it, the 2020 census is going to determine the apportionment. It's going to be strictly by how many people are in the towns, correct?
It's always been that way, this three years.
Okay, so you know, it's not our fault that you're a bigger town. You don't get to have seven votes because you're a bigger town.
My understanding is they all came down from the hill, down into the valley.
Oh no, I don't think so Gary.
It's much cooler up there in the summer.
Jason?
We're out of the flood zone up on top of the hill.
Yes, you are.
To answer your question before Kermit, the last time we've run the numbers, depending on the year, it's anywhere from 72 to 80% that Milford uses. Technically, on a grand basis, Mount Vernon generally subsidizes the other two towns. Lineboro's only a customer, they may have 40% share of what a full member share would be. And that just offsets all your bills. When the original idea of bringing in customers was actually to put that money towards infrastructure, then it came back to boards of selectmen who said, no, we just want a smaller bill. So that's how we ended up where we are on that side of things too. We haven't had the ability to have capital reserve fund, that's not what's been set up in our IMA historically. That's why we are where we are. And as was discussed before, yes, we've tried to do this as incremental plans, budget time. It frequently came down to a two-votes to two-votes stalemate. So yes, there are definitely problems with having a three-member board with four votes on it.
That's what I was getting at.
Or any even number of votes.
Any even number of votes doesn't work.
Maybe, going back to what you said Kermit, and not the exact words, perhaps, maybe the decision for the infrastructure improvements for MAC Base should come through the Board of Selectmen as opposed to the MAC Base Board of Governors. I'm not saying anything derogatory about the Board of Governors because they've done a great job. But being the number is so large and what it is, maybe we might, as just a thought, have the responsibility to do that or take it over. And this way you wouldn't have a discussion with everybody. Just, as I say, just think about it, if that could be a possible solution to our infrastructure purchases which are needed in the future.
And if I could speak to Jack's commentary on that. In a way, you currently have that right now. When budget season comes around, it's not just a discussion amongst my board, that comes back to the boards of selectmen, each town also will point a budget rep at that point, so. There is input, but at the same time.
You could avoid a stalemate.
Yes. We still can't avoid the stalemate because we're still stuck with four votes in there.
But I think, just for a thought, not pushing it, but just starting to think about what you were saying Kermit. Maybe that might be a way to go for the future.
But yes, to have the large-scale projects discussed like this, instead of coming from up there to down here, to up there, to over there, to then come back.
Because we give directives, you give directives, you give directives to your representative. This way it's all right here.
But yes, when it's time for large-scale projects, this is absolutely the way to have that discussion.
And day-to-day management still needs to be, needs to be the board.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
The MAC Base board.
Yes.
Because they know what they're talking about and we don't.
Yes.
Well, that's not.
Points for honesty. Points for honesty.
We mentioned the possibility of an extension, certainly that can be taken into consideration. I guess the last thing under the points for discussion, there was something in the proposed agreement that was changing from a one-year to two-year notification of termination and non-renewal. And I guess thinking about that, while I understand that giving more time, there's also a clause in there that says if you've given your notification, then you can't vote on the budget, which means there would be one year of a budget that a town getting out of it or non-renewing would not be, they would basically have to concede to the other towns that are part of the partnership as to what the budget was and have no say on that. And I felt that was a little bit at a disadvantage for any town that was planning on making a change. Any thoughts on that?
Well, the budget's made in the fall. We give you a notice in December and if things work out, you withdraw it in April. So you're back on good standing again, right?
Didn't quite follow you.
If you give a notice of withdrawal in December, just for example, like, we don't know what's going to come up on the 16th of December.
Right.
So to protect us, we might give a notice of withdrawal.
Okay.
And if things work out to our satisfaction, we withdraw that notification of withdrawal in the spring. We make a decision.
Okay. But if you did not withdraw it, then you're going to go another.
Well, you'd be out of it the following year.
Two years.
Well, it's one year now.
Well, I understand. What I'm saying is that the proposal that had come up was to make that 24 months.
I understand.
Which would cause, and I understand that last year you wouldn't have a say in it anyway, but there would be a year that you're participating, but you don't have any say as to what that budget is.
That's right. For two years. If it was a two-year notification, that's what was said.
I just thought it was a disadvantage regardless of what town you are. Because you're still, you're still contributing your share, but now the other, you don't have any voices to.
But you're not out. You're just giving, you've just given notice.
You've given notice.
But you're still part of the system.
Right.
And, but, and you've got no say in the budget process for the last year.
Because you're not going to be there.
I think what Gary's referring to is under the new proposed one, there was a 24-month period.
Right.
As far as you had to withdraw on. So if you gave your 24-month notice, if you do the budget in the fall for say, if you do the budget in September for say, we gave our notice, any town gave their notice, and you were giving a two-year notice, and you weren't going to be able to participate in the budget activities for two years. The second year would be the year after you're gone. The first year would be for your second year. So what Gary's saying is a town would have no say, they'd be mandated to pay the budget, to pay the dollar amount, but have no say in it. I believe is what Gary's trying to say.
Right.
I understand.
But would still be part of the system.
Still would be part of the system.
Correct.
And it seems like it's no harm, no foul.
No, no, no.
Still not understanding exactly.
Well, I think the issue is that the remaining towns could create a much higher budget and, you know, so let's assume that, you know, the elephant in the room, that Milford decides to pull out.
I see, I see your point now.
Now, Wilton and Mount Vernon would be the only ones who had votes on the budget. So we would say, well, hey, let's double the budget because they're paying 71%. So, you know, if that in fact happened, I could understand why they would be unhappy.
So if we go to the one year that you propose, your idea.
One year is what it is now.
Then that's more equitable in terms of somebody bailing out and having to get, taking advantage of.
But you could, you could still go a two-year notice, but you only don't have a say in that last year, which is going to be the year after you're gone.
That was the discussion that we had, wasn't it? Wasn't it?
No, that wasn't in there. It just said a two-year notice, but the clause said that once you give your notice, you can't participate in the budget.
That can be modified and.
Well, I understand.
One year, yeah.
Hey, good. Remember, this is just suggestions out there that can be changed.
Nothing's written in stone yet.
Right. And it would, you give them a two-year notice, so we tell them in 2020, we're out at the end of 2022. So 2020, we have a say on the budget for 2021.
Right, yeah.
But when it comes time for the 2020 budget.
Which is the budget, you have no say.
We have no say in the last three months up there. So we have that up until the last three months of the two-year say.
Because it won't affect us anyways because we're not paying it if we were pulling out anyways.
Right.
That's what I understood it to be from the beginning when you brought it up Gary.
Okay, no, I.
Did you understand that Kermit, that way?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think that's what makes sense to me, to not have somebody be essentially cut off from.
Right, for two years.
From any vote, but having to continue to pay whatever the other towns chose.
Okay. Okay. Anything, anyone else, anyone wants to contribute to what we've talked about? Anything, anyone else, anyone wants to contribute to what we've talked about this evening?
I just want to remind you that that contract the Board of Governors put together was suggestions.
Right.
That's all, just suggestions for all three boards. It's not saying that we got to do this, we have, we could rip the whole thing up and start over again.
Would I have to, have to be 150? I don't know, so.
Now, read that part about being positive, Jack.
I'm positive, I think positive would be a problem.
Okay. If there is no more discussion on these points, I would like to go into non-public under RSA 91A32C Reputation.
The what?
I would like to go into non-public for a discussion.
This is the Milford Board?
No.
All of us?
This is all of us.
Under Reputation?
Under Reputation.
Make that motion.
Make a motion by Mr. Putnam, is there a second? Second by Selectman Duziak, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries, and we will be in non-public.